Yep, he's got the TV on. Okay, welcome to the City Commission Work Session for Tuesday, October 26th, 2021. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have three items on the agenda tonight. And the first is to discuss a request to amend Sunday sale of liquor and cereal malt beverage hours.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Kristin Dolph, Management Assistant in the City Manager's Office. We are going to be discussing, as the mayor said, amending sale alcohol on Sunday. What do I need to do?
The microphone.
Down, is that better?
Yeah.
Have to click it here, too? Okay, sorry about that. Going to be discussing amending sale of alcohol on Sundays. As the mayor stated, there was a request that came in to amend local ordinance to follow the state statute that was passed this, I believe, this spring. So current regulations, sale is allowed 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Sundays. Our local ordinance does exempt Sundays, or Easter Sunday, Thanksgiving, and Christmas Eve, which, or Christmas, which would stay the same. The proposed amendment is allowing the sale beginning at 9:00 a.m. on Sundays. That's pretty much the extent of what we're asking. As stated in the memo, staff put together a survey and letter and sent it out to licensed retailers, just asking their feedback and input on this amendment. And in that, including the original request, it was a 50-50 split for for and against amending it. We did receive one more input, that call that came in that said that they were not in favor of that. It is not required for businesses to open beginning at 9:00 a.m. This would just allow the opportunity for the sale to occur in those businesses that are already open or choose to open. So pending your feedback tonight, this would require us to amend our current ordinance, which I believe right now, if that would take place, we're slated to bring this back at the November 16th meeting for consideration. And then it would require two consecutive publications, and then a 60-day waiting period following that second publication. So there is that period of 60 days where there could be a petition, just like with every other charter ordinance. So this is the only slide that I have. It's pretty straightforward, so I will turn it over to questions or concerns.
Yeah, I reviewed this. I think we're just moving it back, what, three, three hours?
Yes.
On Sunday to nine as opposed to noon. I remember the days when we didn't even have it on Sundays, and we keep moving that time and day differently. So I read the opposition as well as the support for this. Unless it creates more havoc in the community, I don't see a reason not to move forward. But since Director Butler is here, I would like to hear from him to see if this would have any impact in our community, negative or positive, or maybe nothing, I'm not sure.
Is he excited?
Yes, he is. I know.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Commissioner Reddy, when I was in my last job and there was a first relaxation of state statute on Sunday sales, some of the businesses there adopted that, like you're allowing here, potentially allowing here. I didn't see anything from the police perspective that, that any major changes in crime or anything related to alcohol consumption that we didn't already experience. That doesn't mean that it didn't happen, it just wasn't something so obvious and noticeable that we were concerned about it.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Yeah, with that, I don't see, I hate to say I'm in support of it, all I can say is I don't see any negative impact from it. So I think it would be okay to move it to nine, 9:00 a.m. from 12:00 p.m. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Butler.
Well, to quote Commissioner Estoroc, I'm only slightly above disinterested in this topic. And so it's, I can see both perspectives. If, like I said, if you, if you show up at Hy-Vee at 10:00 o'clock on Sunday morning and buy groceries, you might as well be able to buy your beer, as opposed to having to go a couple hours later. And I know the, when they extended it to Sunday sales, some of the liquor store owners didn't want to do that because they didn't want to have to be open Sunday, because they figured they needed to do that in order to stay competitive. I just, yeah, I don't feel strongly one way or another, might as well do it, I suppose. And if the liquor store owners and the beer joints don't want to open, it's only for liquor, or is it beer only, or liquor and beer and everything?
Everything.
Everything.
Liquor and beer.
So if it's, but not, okay. So, yeah, if they don't want to open up for that extra three hours, no one's holding a gun to their head, they might as well just make their own decision. If they want to sleep in, then open at noon.
I'd like to hear the public, what they have to say before, I mean, I think that sounds like we have a even thinking here, and maybe the public can bring some additional information to us.
Okay.
About the community.
Yeah, my, my thought on it is, what's not mentioned on the slide there is this brings us in alignment with the state law, because, because we're more stringent than the state law. And that makes some sense to me. I appreciate the staff taking the time to, you know, put out that survey information, because that, that would have made a big difference to me if the majority of the, you know, people that have liquor licenses said they weren't interested. And of course, the original request that we got came from Hy-Vee, and it seems like, you know, this is something that the, you know, food stores, they're not selling the hard liquor, but, you know, the beer and that kind of stuff, that it probably benefits them more. And, and this isn't going to force anybody to, to open. And so based on those, you know, survey results, you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to it, but sort of feel like markets, not something that I would have jumped and put on the agenda. It's just not a crisis the way I see it. But if the food markets believe, you know, that's going to be helpful to them, then fine, I just don't have an issue with it. And, and even if we do change it, this isn't going to happen until, it looks like next year, at the soonest somewhere in January at best, so I don't really have a problem with it. But as, you know, Commissioner Morris, anybody in the audience wish to comment on this topic? We'll take public comment. Step right up.
Mask on or off? On, thank you so much. My name is Michael Walter, 2921 Arbor Drive. The state of Kansas has recently changed its law and deferred to local governments the following question. Shall the hours on Sunday that businesses may sell liquor and Q and B products be expanded from 12:00 to 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. to 8:00? You know that. In my allotted three minutes, the answer I believe is both religious. Thank you, I'll make it. The answer I believe is both religious and secular, and age-old, but boils down to mission creep and Christendom's golden rule. Local government entities are better suited to discuss the secular aspects, and some of those have already been covered. I address the religious aspect. In my boyhood days, in the late 1950s in Billings, Montana, I remember city residents in warm discussion about businesses being open at all on Sunday. To us, it was the Lord's day. Selling liquor and C and B on Sundays was then certainly out of the question. Decades later, in the 1980s, here in Manhattan, I remember dissuading my children from working on, at businesses on Sunday. They needed to be in church with me. Selling liquor and C and B on Sundays is still, at least at the time, not in question. In the last few years, however, my grandchildren have little choice while seeking age commensurate employment but to work on Sundays. Selling liquor and C and B is now permitted on Sundays and religious holidays, and as explained, less Easter during certain hours. There are now recent permissions to sell it in grocery and convenience stores, that wasn't always so. Such an incremental change at state and local levels, I call a mission creep, has been out of respect for Christendom's hope to keep Sundays in some measure of religious observance, and yet accommodate those who believe otherwise. While I believe the creep will, is ultimately offensive to our God, and certainly counterproductive to family unity and worship, is nonetheless an expression of the golden rule, do unto others as you would have them do unto you. But the golden rule should work both ways. Restrain on the part of local business to expand his Sunday hours for offering liquor and C and B products would be evidence of the same. Our community, even local business, need not be party to new options permitted by the state. In the published words of one of the recipients and those who had responded to the survey put out by the city, I quote, "We are open 92 hours a week currently, more than enough for people to plan ahead and not have to increase the hours of sales to accommodate." I would only add, there are more than financial considerations to our discussion. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this topic?
Well, I'm Dr. Gardner, I've practiced here for some 40 years or so. It's interesting, and I think it was last year or the year before, from England studies that alcohol itself was not healthy for people, under any circumstance. But that's not coming to, I mean, if I was doing something, I'd say no, no alcohol or availability on Sunday or any other time. But basically, that's a public health kind of issue that we have to deal with in our world. I, as a boy, grew up in Berkeley, California, and I think the stores were open on Sundays and that sort of thing. But when I was in medical school in St. Louis, the stores weren't even open on Sunday, none of the stores. You could go for dinner in a restaurant, they had that, and we, my friend and I used to do that because we didn't like to cook for each other. I was a resident in Utah, which at the time, I think, was the same way. But the things that changed that were the competitive nature of, of our society and the big businesses that wanted to have a bigger thing, and I guess they could increase their sales by having it open on Sunday. This particular thing of restricting from nine to, to 12 does have some kind of an effect as far as just the attitudes and where we sit with some of these things. And I, I would personally, if I was on the City Commission, I'd vote against this proposal, unless I found that the majority of those really wanted to do that for some reason. I can see some kids that might be working from K-State, maybe at Hy-Vee, that's not quite as likely to be a situation where the alcohol makes too much of a difference because there's so many other things. But if you're in a place where they just sell alcohol quite a bit, well, that's knocking out the Sunday morning time that the young person might otherwise choose to go and attend a church service in the Sunday mornings, I assume most churches do that. So these are my general feelings about it, and I know when the state passes something like that, which I kind of wonder why they did that, then it puts kind of a situation that's a little difficult for you folks to determine what you want to do, but that's my thoughts about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on changing the hours of sale? Okay, saying none, you want to? Go ahead, Linda.
Well, I, I think the state legislature was trying to do some, what Manhattan has been trying to do, which is accommodate business, especially during COVID, and that would have passed last February, probably March. And in order to try to keep businesses healthy, and certainly we have expanded, I think twice, our rules here, we, to do that very thing also. I don't feel like this is in the same category. This is the big grocery store that is making the request, and I don't feel compelled to support it. We're not hearing a majority of the local businesses, the liquor industry, the beer industry here pushing us, there's nobody here. And so I believe it's only, you know, you mentioned that there's, this only means beer at Hy-Vee, but Hy-Vee is going to go into the, the liquor business also, and that's what they want their drive-up for. So I, I think we need a better read on our community and what people really think here, and not just listen to one industry, I guess, is what I would say. And so I'm, I'm not supportive of it, I don't think it's, it's necessary, it's not essential, it's, and I understand what you're saying about not feeling strongly one way or the other, but I think that there are issues in our society that are, that alcohol just expands or magnifies. And so I'd like for us to do these kinds of expanding alcohol availability, I'd like for us to do it slower, I'd like to see what the consequences are of our actions, and instead of three times in one year, one-year period of time, making that kind of a, making another expansion of the, of the rules. So that's just how I feel about it, I'm not anti, and I, necessarily, I just think there are, we need to be more measured and thoughtful, so.
Yeah, I think as I was, we passed an ordinance, you know, for Hy-Vee to have that drive-through, but that had to do with food pickup, it didn't have anything to do with liquor sales.
For now.
As, as I recall. And I, I don't think they can do liquor sales unless Kansas law changes, because right now they just changed it so they could do the beer. So I don't know what that's going to do, you know, in the future. Like I said, this is not something that, you know, I would have asked to be put on the agenda. I, I find it interesting that, you know, we had like about a 50-50 split on the owners out there. And I, you know, my general philosophy has always been less government regulation is better, and, and I like to just stick with the, with the Kansas law. But, but I also think, you know, just like Hobby Lobby and Chick-fil-A, you know, you don't have to open on Sunday. And, and, and those are two stores doing just fine, and, and they just close. And so again, it's, it's like a personal liberty thing, you know? It doesn't make any difference to me if they sell liquor on Sundays at all, I couldn't care less, but, but, you know? So I, I'm open, you know, to, to go ahead and, and put it on the agenda and, and see if we get further feedback. I mean, this is the first time we've discussed it, I'm sure we'll get much more information before it comes up for an ordinance vote, and it's not going to be a massive amount of work for the staff, is it? I mean, this is just a simple, simple hour change in the current ordinance, so it's not like it's going to be a lot of staff time. Otherwise, that would be something that would sway me also if we had to do a bunch, but that's sort of where I'm at.
Yeah, I, I've changed my mind, I now have an opinion. So I'm, I'm not for it. Yeah, at some point, just because you can do something means you should do something. And, yeah, 92 hours is plenty of time, and so, so I'm not for it. If we want to bring it up and then have maybe some people who care will, not, not you guys don't care, but more people, if somebody really cares about this, then maybe they'll come down and, and hang out with us and make a plea for it. But with, with Hy-Vee really being the only promoter of it, that's this big business, big unfeeling, uncaring, ungodly business, just trying to get an extra few bucks. So we don't, yeah, it's, from my perspective, we don't have to accommodate that necessarily. So if bring it up you want, I'll vote against it, but let, we'll, we'll let some other people, if there's really a demand for it, let's have them show up.
I'd like to add that I know that Hy-Vee did some heavy lobbying in the legislature to get this bill passed, and they're a big player here. I know that the, from reading the collection of other cities, that, that the cities are kind of falling right in line to mirror the state law. So there's a movement across Kansas, city to city, to change the law so that from 6:00 to noon on Sunday, I'm just saying that it's a industry initiated and, you know, I'm sure it will probably pass eventually, but I don't have to be one of the folks that support it. And I do appreciate Dr. Gardner, him being here. I know that he was one of the leaders of the non-smoking campaign that we had here, and I don't know, that must have been eight years ago, before we passed the no-smoking ordinance, and that took leadership and courage in this, in a community, any community, all communities. And I, I think we just have to be thoughtful, and that's what I would say.
Based, based on, you know, that line of reasoning, you know, and, and I agree, we don't have a, there, there isn't a lobby here, we've got a lobby here that says no tonight, we don't have a bunch of store owners here saying yes. So, so I guess I have to agree with Mark, you know, it looks like, you know, it's going to take three votes to pass this, and I don't think we have them, so I think we just don't put it on the agenda. And anybody out there that wants to change it, you're going to have to show up here and convince at least three commissioners it's worth the time, but that doesn't seem to be the case tonight. Good enough? Appreciate the feedback.
I just want to add a couple of comments to this. I think we've seen a movement since COVID about alcohol sales. We've made several changes, even from going from the restaurant to the platforms and such. So all of those little layers are being removed, and even open carry containers, so all of these things are being moved. So I don't, I, this is a, an issue that, it is typically done by big business, and I think it's absolutely right, let's, let's see what happens in the future. I don't, I don't feel one way or another about it, I do think eventually it's going to happen. I think we're just kind of moving it down. Anything related to alcohol seems to, I don't know, seems to become more and more less restrictive. And, and so that does concern me, because alcoholism is a pretty big deal, and I think that's where our alcohol, the budget that we have for special alcohol funds goes to. And I think we need to do our part in, in part of that, not just for the revenue source, but maybe in a preventive measure of our own kind in a way. So thank you.
Yeah, I guess the bottom line is, a change in alcohol hours is not the commission's priority, at least not this month, and we'll leave it at that. Okay, let's move on to the, and appreciate your presentation, particularly like the fact that it was only one slide. Absolutely outstanding.
It's not in our strategic plan.
And we'll go to the next item, Item B, which is Convention and Visitors Bureau Third Quarter Report.
Well, we do have more than one slide. And we have a video. I want to go from the beginning. Well, good evening, Commissioners, city staff, and the Manhattan community. It's always amazing how quickly time is flying. And speaking of flying, Bernie Haney, who is our steering committee chairman, is flying home tonight, but his flight is being delayed, and so consequently, as a result, you will be hearing from me, I'm Karen Hibbard, the Director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and later on you will be hearing from Marcia Rozell, our Sports and Leisure Sales Manager. We will do our best to present to you tonight the third quarter happenings that represent July through September. As you know, our mission statement is to expand the local area economy by attracting visitors. As our community, state, and world continue to navigate through the end of the pandemic, we continue to see the effects of visitors on Manhattan, Kansas. The STAR report truly reflects how our lodging is performing. As we look at September, month to month, we are indeed improving. Month to month, we are almost back to where we were in September of 2017. Our occupancy for September was 57.8%, the average daily rate was $115.05, the revenue per room was $66.51, the supply of 38,820, demand 22,440, generating revenues of $2,581.75. Keep in mind, during the third quarter, we also added to our hotel inventory, we welcomed 127 rooms with the opening of the Courtyard by Marriott. As we look at the year-to-date through September, the STAR report, we continue to see improvement. We have improved from September year-to-date 2020 by 10.6% occupancy. We're still lagging behind from other years, as September typically is when we begin to see meetings pick up. The occupancy year-to-date through September is 52.4% occupancy, the average daily rate of $98.42, the revenue per room $51.60, the supply of 328,390 rooms, the demand 172,166, yielding revenues of $16,944, $944,120. Even with taking the 2020 pandemic out of the picture, we're still lagging behind in our occupancy about 12 to 15% in that third quarter. However, during the Kansas Tourism Conference, STAR was there, and they reported that Kansas is doing well on our road to recovery. We are 17th out of 51 states, no, we haven't added another state, but they do include Washington, D.C. in that count, and, and we are doing well in returning to those 2019 numbers. We found it interesting that the United States leads in the hotel global recovery, with the average daily rate recovering faster than that of occupancy. The other good news is small towns are recovering quicker than cities are, and with that, STAR predicts that 2022 indeed will be the year that we can embrace. We've looked at the monthly and yearly STAR report, we wanted to provide you a peek into the first two weeks of the fourth quarter. We do see that our occupancy continues to improve. So far, during 2021, we have had 13 days of a 90% occupancy or above. Six of those days were due to Kansas State University football, and the seven other days were due to special events, meetings, and sports. With the many activities and events planned for the fourth quarter, we are indeed anxious to see the results of the completed fourth quarter. Again, our friends at the STAR predict that there will be much pent-up holiday demand during this upcoming holiday season, so stay tuned. During the third quarter, we worked directly with 20 meetings, these meetings are listed, which yielded 2,410 attendees, 1,760 estimated rooms, and $1,036,415 in estimated economic impact. Keep in mind that these are, that there are meetings that are being booked directly into our properties, missing out on our great services, but yet taking advantage of our spacious meeting space across the community. This reflects what meetings typically look like during the third quarter. As you can see, we're up a bit from the pandemic year. We look forward to returning We look forward to returning once again to where we were prior to the pandemic. Quarter by quarter, we are seeing improvement, even if it is slight. We are monitoring closely the patterns of meetings. During COVID, we have learned it is possible to meet virtually. What is lacking is the ability to network. Traditionally, meetings were three to four a days in length, and we see those becoming a bit tighter, with the many meetings being a day, day and a half. We do believe that we will continue to see a mix of hybrid meetings well into 2022, with the understanding that in the very near futures, attendees will see the value of being in person in order to network and to learn more effectively. During 2020, we experienced conferences declining or cease completely. I honestly thought I would never live to see that. We are thankful that Manhattan is a community that continues to offer an abundance of sporting events. Clearly, those events helped create a consistent economic impact on Manhattan during a very dire time. This evening, Marcia Rozell, our sports leisure sales manager, who is dedicated and passionate about making sports even more prominent in Manhattan community, is here to report on our sports marketing efforts and results.
Thanks, Karen. Mayor, city commissioners, it is my pleasure to present to you what's happening with sports in Manhattan. You all well know that we have indoor, new indoor sports facilities. You have seen this publication, excuse me, you have seen this publication that our office created for attracting sports planners to consider these new venues. We mailed it out, emailed it out, handed it out, and it's working. And we are super pumped. Is there volume?
Don't look.
Don't look. Thanks. As we look to 2022, specifically for indoor venue rentals, we have booked wrestling and basketball annual tournaments at the New Anthony Recreation Center. While this is a relocation of venues as they have previously utilized other facilities, both organizations see the potential to expand the number of their athletes at their tournaments. This growth in participants might take a year or two, but will provide great dividends to our entire community. Also, we have booked a brand-new tournament, a cornhole tournament. This tournament will draw both professional and amateurs to town. February 2022, Manhattan will host two new tournaments. Mid-America Youth Basketball on February 12th, and a two-day tournament with Heart of America Volleyball. I'll share more about those organizations later in the presentation. Also, I have a meeting later this week with pickleball planners, who are looking at that February 5th date. In March, Manhattan will host two A state high school basketball, which we have done for the previous twenty-five years. It's March 9th through 12th up at Brambridge Coliseum. We will also add another Mid-America Youth Basketball Tournament on March 12th at Anthony Recreation Center. In April, we will host another Mid-America Youth Basketball Tournament, plus the Missouri Valley District Gymnastics Three-Day Meet will be at the Eisenhower Recreation Center. I want to highlight that it's taken over two years to develop a solid relationship with Mid-America Youth Basketball, and as a result, we have secured multiple tournament dates for 2022. This organization is headquartered out of Newton, Kansas. Their tournaments draw from thirty-seven hundred teams in twenty-seven states. We predict we will host teams during the summer that travel from Nebraska, Oklahoma, Iowa, and Missouri to shoot hoops in Manhattan. As a community, we will need to step up our game in welcoming these teams this spring in order for the summer tournaments to grow. There is nothing better than word of mouth among parents when playing at tournaments elsewhere. We want our parents saying, you got to go to Manhattan. I mentioned on the calendar that the Heart of America Volleyball will be hosting a two-day tournament in February. Heart of America Volleyball is headquartered in Kansas City, Missouri. They draw from a hundred and twenty-eight teams, ages eleven to eighteen, from Missouri and Kansas. They will be utilizing both Anthony and Eisenhower during that weekend. One of our regional gymnastics businesses, Katz Gymnastics out of Omegle, will be hosting a three-day Missouri Valley District meeting at Eisenhower Recreation Center. They will load in the necessary equipment and begin on Friday, April twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth. They will have seven hundred to seven hundred and fifty athletes, and their families will be here cheering them on. Little Apple Big Money Tournament is the new cornhole tournament. As this is set to pay out, it will draw professional cornholers from out of state. Our fingers are crossed that the weather will cooperate at this time of year. There will be two divisions, professional and amateurs, so all of you can sign up to compete. To recap what Manhattan has hosted in the third quarter, you can see the sports vary from baseball, softball, paddling, golf, a triathlon, running, to cycling. We hosted fourteen sporting events, bringing in over a million dollars in estimated economic impact. Sports makes a difference in Manhattan. From our water trails, to our running trails, to cycling on gravel, these are just an example of the third-quarter sporting events. Manhattan is fortunate to have such a variety of sports that pull in the weekend enthusiasts. This was the fourth year for the Bleeding Kansas Gravel Dural, a unique cycling event that has six time segments, allowing riders to enjoy their time on our gravel roads, riding with their friends. This is a heat map utilizing zip codes. Shows that over sixty-three percent of those who came to ride came from sixty-plus miles out, ensuring that many spent the night in Manhattan. During the third quarter, we had numerous leisure events, some are unique. Nordic Thunder with the air guitar competition was at Third Thursday, and the Big Boy Steam Engine rolled through town in early September. Some of our annual events happened as well in the third quarter, such as Praise Fest. This, they added an additional day of music this year, and estimated more than five thousand in attendance. All of these events draw not only our commu, local community members, but also visitors to Manhattan.
Thank you, Marcia. Indeed, I think you all will agree that sports and leisure activities are what help make Manhattan a fun destination. Every day is a great day in Manhattan when we get to tell our unique story. On Wednesday, September the twenty-second, that was no exception, as we hosted three travel writers in a whirlwind tour of Manhattan and Kansas. Their visit was a great partnership that we had with Kansas Tourism. We hosted these three travel writers for two and a half hours. Yes, I said hours. Kayanne Lewis, the woman on our right, the striped shirt, she's from Portland, Oregon. She's a blogger with a focus of kid tripster. She's creating digital and social media content. She covers US vacations, but had yet to have any information at all on Kansas. On this trip, Kayanne was gathering information for family travel, vacation, and adventures. Anita Thomas is from Atlanta, Georgia. She's a broadcast journalist with Travel with Anita and Quarter Miles Travel. Her on-air personality creates a great travel radio show. She focuses on empty nesters, baby boomers, who like the outdoors, history, and culture. She reaches an audience of forty thousand visitors, listeners. And Irene Mittelman-Thomas is from Loveland, Colorado. She's a freelance writer, writing stories for AAA Publications, Lifestyle Colorado, Expression Colorado, and Parents About Town, with a focus on California. She had a very keen interest in biking. Although she has lived her entire life in Colorado, she had never been to Kansas. After this tour, she was definitely saying, oh, man. During their visit, not only did we talk fast, we immersed them in the Flint Hills Discovery Center, we had lunch at Coco Bolos, and we did our best to tell the Manhattan, Kansas story. And yes, we are positive, we will have stories created as a result of this whirlwind tour. Travel writers' visits are only one example of how our website analytics are enhanced. During our travel writers' visit, they confirmed that they had already learned much about Manhattan from visiting our website, visitmanhattanks.org. Our third-quarter analytics show that we continue to increase with our number of users. At the end of the third quarter, we boasted forty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight users. And in case you're counting, this does indeed make us nine thousand one hundred and fifty-four users away from reaching our goal that we set in 2021. We are positive that we're going to achieve that goal. With our email marketing efforts, we continue to reach out both to those leisure travelers and to our meeting planners, and we continue to be consistent with that. Our click rate for our August meet in Manhattan, though, however, was only five percent. As you know, August is a busy month. It's a great month to get away, you get your kids back in school, you take time to breathe. We were encouraged to see that our September click rate for Meet Manhattan bounced back up to eleven percent, right where we thought that it should be. It really is great to be able to stay in touch either on your phone, tablet, or desktop, and learning all there is to know about Manhattan. We have increased our followers by over eleven percent for the year, so far surpassing our already increased goal, which we increased at mid-year by ten percent. Our organic impressions have increased by fifty-seven percent compared to the second quarter. In August, we ran an outdoor paid campaign, an outdoors paid campaign, with a series of ads highlighting ziplining, scenic views, and trails. These ads received over four hundred thousand impressions. Again, these impressions validate our social media efforts are indeed effective. Oh, man, we can hardly wait for Santa to visit. In anticipation of the fourth quarter, Santa's elves have been hard at work, setting the stage for the spirit of the holiday. As you see here, you're going to begin to see evidence of the spirit of the holidays appearing next week to our visitors and locals alike as they begin to plan for the holidays. We have sixteen hospitality partners, which will distribute nearly fifty thousand coasters, sixty, six hundred table tents, and seventy posters will be distributed across the community. All of our hotels will have door hangers on their hotel door, and those, again, will be distributed next week, the first week of November. Designed with a QR code, they'll be able to use their phone, activate that QR code, which will take them to our website, where they will have an interactive page where they can learn more about that event, where they can be directed to, they'll come to our website, but will be directed to those others' websites as a result, to learn more and to be able to plan their activities. We're confident that this marketing campaign will help to make Manhattan's cash register say, ho, ho, ho. So, it is an honor to promote Manhattan as a destination. Now, which of you as commissioners might have the first question for your Visit Manhattan team? I know we only had one video, sorry.
That's a little disappointing, but, so you said, besides, the conference center, our conference center is set up to do, be able to do hybrid Zoom and in-person combo things and stuff like that. Are some of the other conference hotels also kind of geared that way, so?
Yes, they have.
So, there is the ability for?
Yeah. It's, it's been very, very fascinating, Commissioner, to see how meetings have, have gone. I mean, it's kind of start-stop, start-stop, and as those planners plan, you know, they certainly want to be cognizant of what their attendees, how they feel comfortable, if they feel comfortable with coming in person, or yet being online.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah, I wanted to say, excellent, excellent presentation. I like all the numbers I'm seeing, especially with the recreation sports. You know, when the sales tax passed for the rec centers and the ball field, you know, ball fields and all of this, the trails, the taxpayers paid for the infrastructure, and the operational costs, in my mind, was going to be paid by these events. And it's good to see, we, you know, having gymnastics and pickleball, basketball, volleyball. That was the intent of it. So, if we get a sales tax revenue from that, that will take care of some of the operational costs, staff, and all of these other things. So, I'm so glad to hear that there's already some committed dates. And I also learned that there's a cornball tournament, which I didn't know about, so that's good. And pickleball, things that we wouldn't typically think about. Gymnastics, you know, one of the first consultants that came here said, any competitive sports that involves our, involves young girls and anything like that, they tend to spend a little bit more and enjoy Manhattan. So, that's even, even better. Wrestling, all of these things, and I think that's just going to get better. And I think our community is going to appreciate that. I think it's going to be very, a dramatic change, especially when we start having more tennis tournaments and, and such, because I know those are blocked out like maybe two or three years in advance. But I'm so glad to see that happening. And, you know, this is already October, so January is going to be here before you know it, so I'm thrilled about that. And I know, Marcia, you're such a huge advocate for all of our recreation, water recreation events. I'm glad that's also taking off and doing well. I think you do an outstanding job in both of those areas. The Rotary District 5710 had their meeting here, their district meeting at the Hilton Garden Inn, and it was perfect. We had the breakout rooms, which weren't there before. Parking was, you know, excellent, of course, but I felt the breakout rooms and the expansion was very productive. Because on the other side, there were also other rooms being used for wedding receptions. So, there was two or three things happening at the same time, which wasn't possible before. So, it's exciting to see those types of things coming back. Even if your full-fledged conferences may not last three or four days, it's good to see all of these other events that can be taking place in that time, too. So, yeah, I think it's a, a really good update and something good for us to hear about more sales tax revenue, which is always why we're building and trying to give a better quality of life for our community. So, thank you.
I would just say that I am so pleased with the economic recovery I'm reading about in the Kansas City and different newspapers, and the work that you're doing is making that happen here, too. So, I just, you know, in addition to the natural or organic kind of effort that people are making to, quote, return to normal. And I know that it's taken a, I, I bet you used a lot of that time to plan, so. And I think you do do an excellent job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm impressed, you know, with the, the sports venue, as Commissioner Reddy said. That, that's just outstanding, and that's what we sort of expected when we invested in the, in the recreation centers, so. And I'm looking forward to hearing what the pickleball people decide.
That's tomorrow morning.
Yeah, because that, you know, that, that group seems to be, you know, they're enthusiastic.
They are.
We'll be able to do something interesting with that.
They are.
I really like, you know, the spirit of the holidays, you know, rollout. And of course, I've been working with Karen on that for, for a while. And, and what's impressive is that, you know, we really started thinking about this a couple of years ago, and we had all these groups in town doing all these neat things. of years ago, and we had all these groups in town doing all these neat things, but there wasn't any central coordination. And the beauty of this is, you know, you go to the website, there's twenty-four specific events. The first one starts November ninth, which is the Festival of Trees, which has now been moved into the mall. And all of this is sort of aligned, that the idea is, you know, we're the spirit of the holidays destination, and we want all those people to come here and make those cash registers ring, and that'll drive up our sales tax. And if you look at that list of twenty-four things, it's just outstanding, and it's brought together, you know, the Aggieville Business District, DMI, the Flint Hills Volunteer Center, the Discovery Center, all these different groups that put on things, and, you know, one-stop shopping, you know, Whoville. I mean, this is just going to be a great event, and then there's just, if you look at that list, it's hard to see on that thing there, but go to the website, you can click on each event, and it'll take you to the specifics, and you got the QDR code. This thing's just absolutely outstanding, so I'm really, I'm really looking forward to the holidays. That's always my favorite time of year, anyway, but we can kick this off nine November, and it goes all the way to the ball drop in Aggieville on New Year's Day. So that's a real winner in my mind, so great work on that.
Thank you.
One last question. Since we've got some, a beginning of a relationship with the Mid-America people and the heart of America, and...
Yes.
Someone tries to touch base with them after their weekend to kind of...
Oh, absolutely.
...figure out if we screwed up and how to fix it before it becomes a big deal and all that.
Yes, absolutely. I will be there at the tournament, and then, right as soon as it ends, we'll touch base while it's still fresh in their mind, and then even a few weeks later, they might send it out to their participants and get the feedback from them, certainly.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah, that's, those first three spring events, they're just one day, but they'll build to those summer two-day tournaments, and that'll make a huge difference. If we do it well in the spring, the summer will be even bigger.
Very good. Stay on top of that, and let us know if there's anything else that the city can do.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent presentation, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, and we have one final item on the agenda, and that would be the Riley County Police Department update, and I guess Director Butler's going to fill us in on that.
Good evening again, Mayor and members of the City Commission. Before Karen leaves, I'm going to mention a couple of things. I know she gets excitable when she talks about tourism, and hopefully this'll, this'll please her, maybe not excite her, but please her, but as we sit here and meet tonight, this entire week, we are conducting a promotional assessment center for several ranks at the Police Department for correctional officers and police officers, and we secured the services of the International Association of Chiefs of Police to conduct this for us. It originally was supposed to be held in May, but due to COVID and travel restrictions, they had a tough time rounding up enough assessors to do an in-person assessment center. They wanted to do it virtually. I've had a lot of experience with these things, and I just didn't feel like a virtual assessment center was going to be as effective as I would like, and so I said, "Well, let's delay this, when can we do it?" And we settled on this week. My point is, we have retired and active police officials from New York, Philadelphia, Washington, D.C., Alexandria, Virginia, where I used to work, so they're in town right now, staying in hotels and spending money. In addition to that, since I've been in Manhattan, I have become a big fan and been lobbying of other professional associations to hold meetings and conferences here. So in April, the FBI National Academy Associates, of which I'm a member, had a conference here in April. Before they left, they said, and they'd never been here before, and before they left, they said they loved it so much, they wanted to come back in the spring. So they're going to be back in May, or April, April again, to do that, do it all over again. And they're asking me about new events. We had a dinner one night over at the Midwest Car Museum and had that catered, probably had about a hundred, one hundred and fifty people attend. So in May of next year, the Kansas Association of Chiefs of Police will be here at a hotel holding a conference. So I've been working hard to tell people what a great place this is, and they're listening and showing up. Probably doesn't move the needle as much as some of the other things that Karen's talked about, but it's something, so. Wanted to say that while she was still here, because she told me she wasn't going to stay for my presentation. As a citizen, before I get into my list, I wanted to tell you, I hadn't been out walking as much as I normally do recently and over the summer, and I was out the other day and noticed the improvements occurring at Annenberg Park on the walking trails. And my wife and I have, had been regular users of that for some time, and recently we hadn't, but I was back out there, and I was so excited to come back and tell her what was going on there. So I just wanted to thank you as part of your upgrades to parks and facilities for doing that, because we were regular users, and it's going to be really nice not dodging mud puddles and washouts and things like that that occur, so thank you for doing that. On my list, our hiring efforts continue for both police officers and correctional officers. So since October first, we've hired three new police, not hired, we've graduated three new police officers from the academy, and we have three others in training that are already certified in Kansas, so we're really making some good progress in filling our vacancies. We're having more challenges with corrections. Corrections has been, since COVID, a real tough nut to crack. We got our work cut out for us, and we're making progress, we're hiring, but we've got, I was feeling really bad about the number of vacancies, and then I heard another city not too far from here, within an hour, had a fifty percent vacancy in their corrections department. We're about half of that right now, that vacancy rate, which is too high, and we're working hard. We've made some dramatic changes in our process to try to attract a larger pool, and we're making some progress. We're not quite where we would like to be, but the longer that goes on, the more risk we face of burnout of the officers that are there, working longer shifts, extra overtime and things like that, and that's why it's important not to let this go on too long, because once you get into that vicious cycle, it's really difficult to break out of it. So I just wanted you to know that we're continuing our efforts there. I'm really happy to report, and we haven't brought it before the County Commission yet or the Law Board, but we received word from the Governor's Grants Office that our grant for our victim advocate was approved again, so that's been renewed. That victim advocate is Melissa Mosier, and this will be the third year in a row we've received this grant, and will retain her services. What's really exciting is the last year and now this year, she's had an intern from K-State working with her. So we just had a new intern start working with her about a month ago, and so we're very happy to have those additional services and help train some of our local students in this kind of work. Operation Greek has been active in September. Melissa Mosier and several of our officers attended a couple of Greek house dinners or meetings, both sororities and fraternities, talking about sexual assault awareness, talking about alcohol consumption, and then overall, just making good choices as college students, and that is something they invite us to, and we're always happy to attend and provide information for them. As far as community outreach, just last Friday, we were at the Spooktacular at Sunset Zoo from five-thirty to seven-thirty. This week, on Friday, we'll be in Aggieville for the Trick or Treat at the West Loop Spectacular, that same night, different hours, and also on Sunday, we'll be participating in a trunk-or-treat at Manhattan First Assembly of God. So we continue our efforts in community outreach in a variety of ways. The food barbecue trailer was out all summer long. We got to the point, we had to start making a schedule and turning people down. It's become the very popular request for us to staff this, and it requires staffing, and so we've got to balance, again, the available people that we have to go work that and also do the regular shifts, but I like to, I'm happy that we have the demand for it, instead of having it sit there and do nothing. That was the intent. Also, at the last Law Board meeting, we provided some basic crime stats that I'll share with you real quickly. Here in Riley County, we've had a consistently lower crime rate than the state average since two thousand and three, and that is every year without exception for both violent and property crime. In 2020, compared to 2019, the Riley County, excuse me, in Riley County last year, the crime rate, the violent crime rate, was forty-two percent lower than the state average. The property crime rate was thirty-nine point eight percent lower than the state average, and if you combine those two, the total crime rate in Riley County is forty percent lower than the state average during 2020. That is not something that the Police Department can take full credit for. We have great citizens here that have to work with us for us to be able to keep the community safe without their cooperation and belief in the work that we do. We wouldn't enjoy the community that we have, so much credit goes to them. I think that's all I had on my list. I've already mentioned a couple of other things here, because Karen was here, so I jumped on it quickly. Are there any questions that you have for me?
Just always be sure to report to, your numbers to Karen. She's count, she's counting them all.
I will. That reminds me, there is one other thing, not related to Karen, but there is one other thing. When we had the Law Board meeting last Monday, we talked about our annual use of force report. We also put some information in there about the use of force and broke it down by race. The Manhattan Mercury wrote an article about it, where they misinterpreted some of the data, and then the publisher wrote something the next day that was a further misinterpretation of our data, so I wrote a letter today in response to that. It wasn't a defensive letter at all, it was just an effort to try to educate them and the public about what was in this report. I will be the first one to admit that this report was really heavy on academia and that type of language, and it is, it is a little bit difficult to follow and interpret, so I really tried to break it down into more layman's terms, and next year, that is what we will be doing moving forward. We are going to simplify many aspects of this, but the way we collected the data and analyzed it from an empirical data evaluation is very important to do that, but when we're presenting to the Law Board and to members of the public, we need to put it in more layman's terms, so we don't confuse anyone or create the kinds of articles that we saw this week. The publisher told me that he was going to publish my letter as soon as possible. I was hoping it would be out before tonight's meeting, but I didn't see it before I came over, so just wanted to let you know about that.
What, it's been a long time since I was on the Law Board, and I don't remember details. What constitutes a use of force by the police? Is it having to restrain somebody involuntarily, is it bonking him on the head with a nightstick, tasing him? Where, what, where does the line cross from nothing to suddenly use of force? What is that line?
You know, that is an excellent question, Commissioner, and I, the first part of my answer is that not every police department classifies force the way we do here. I'll give you a very basic example. If an officer provides a direction to somebody that they are under arrest and to submit to the arrest, or they are detaining them based on probable cause, they may not be under arrest, but they're detained, if the person does anything other than comply, and the officer has to put their hands on them to control them, we classify that as a use of force. If we do that, even if we don't see any visible injury, but they complain that they're injured, we classify it as a use of force. If we unholster a taser and give them a, an order to submit to an arrest, that is classified as a use of force, even if we don't discharge the taser, which is another use of force. If we use pepper spray on someone, that is a use of force. I could go on, you know, I'm elevating what the use of force is. The bottom line is, the vast majority of the uses of force that we track are hands-on control holds that are trained techniques. I guess the next, most common ones would be taser and pepper spray. The officers are heavily trained in de-escalation and use verbal commands to try to control people that either are being arrested or being detained for lawful investigation. So more serious force that would likely cause an injury either to the person being arrested or to the officer is much more rare. Most police departments do not classify putting their hands on someone as a use of force unless they injure them, or they, or the person complains of an injury. Usually, it starts with a pepper spray, not an unholstering, but a pepper spray, a taser, not an unholstering, but actual use. We track all of that as a use of force. So if you try to compare us to another department, unless they're tracking it exactly the same way, it might seem as though we have much higher rates. And last year, I just wanted to mention this, is when we started tracking unholstering tasers as a use of force. So our numbers from last year were much higher than the year before because of, because of that fact that we started tracking that, that particular use of force. We could have a very long discussion about this, but I'm glad, I'm glad you asked the question.
No, thanks, that's exactly what I wanted to figure out.
So you've always counted, if you had to use the taser?
Yes.
But this time, this report, you're tracking if you even need to pull it out.
That is correct.
Yeah, so that...
That is correct.
...made the numbers go up. I just think that's important for people to understand.
The reason why we do that, I, let me elaborate just a little bit more, if you don't mind. The reason why we started doing that is because we wanted to determine whether or not the officers were being effective in their de-escalation techniques. So by tracking the fact that they had to draw their taser and threaten to use it, it gives us that opportunity to look at their body-worn camera video, their in-car video, get statements from the officer to see, is there something they could have done that would have been more effective verbally to de-escalate the situation before they had to resort to that? That creates training opportunities, it creates retraining opportunities. Sometimes it results in minor discipline if we feel like they could have done something better. That's one of the main reasons why we started doing that, and we're still taking quite a bit of proactive measures to, I wish we didn't have to use any force, but what that comes down to is complete citizen compliance with lawful orders. And until we reach that point, then officers have to be trained to take people into custody and protect themselves and others.
Thank you for that explanation. One of the things that came out of the ITGA conference and meetings we've had in the past few years is "Your Option, Your Control." I wanted to know if you can give us an update on how that's going. I know it was probably just implemented a year or two ago, and just wanted to know a little bit more about it.
We are still using it. We think it's an effective technique in investigating sexual assault. For those of you that aren't familiar with it, I'll give a brief overview. "Your Option, Your Control" means that a victim of sexual assault does not have to submit themselves to a full investigation if they don't want to, and they can have third parties report on their behalf that they have been sexually assaulted. The entire idea behind this is to provide victims the opportunity to take control of their life back after something like this happens. So if somebody calls us and says, "I was sexually assaulted, here's what happened," they don't have to give us the name of the suspect. Now, we do tell them, if you don't give us the name, then we can't do any more, but we'll take the report and put in it as much as you provide to us. And then we tell them, "When you're ready, if you want to proceed further, you can re-contact us and give us more information, and then we'll proceed with the investigation." When we have someone that does not want to submit to a full investigation, we will oftentimes get our victim advocate involved, put them in touch with the person, and try to reassure them about the process they're going to go through if they do make a full report. Likewise, I said, third-party reporting, someone can come in and say, "My friend," and they don't have to give us their name, they can give us a location, a time, what the friend told them, and so we're documenting something, and if a victim decides they want to proceed with the investigation later, having that initial information is critically important to document something happened until they're willing or ready to provide additional information. I will be honest with you that sometimes these investigations are a little bit difficult to proceed with when they're delayed. Evidence can be lost, memories fade, witnesses disappear. We tell victims all of that upfront. We want them to be aware, not to try to cajole them or make them do something, but just realize, the longer we wait, the less likely we can successfully prosecute someone. And so they have all the information they need to make an informed decision about what they want to do. But I think it's going well. We don't have any plans to change it, but it is hard to wrap your brain around, because traditionally, when you call the police and report something, things happen a certain way, and this is the one specific case where it doesn't.
So how do you get that information out to the community, being in a university town or just in a community where plenty of things can happen? How do you get that out to not just your Greek organizations, but other social service organizations, the Manhattan Emergency Shelter, all of these other places?
organizations, the Manhattan Emergency Shelter, all of these other places? Do you have Melissa Mosier going and talking to them, or how is, how, how do you get it out?
We do. We also, Melissa Mosier tweets almost weekly about "Your Option, Your Control." Not everybody's on Twitter, but demographic heavily uses Twitter, so almost every week she puts a message out about it. Also, I can't tell you how excited I am about the new director at the Crisis Center, Kathy Ray. The year after I came to Kansas, she and I worked together on a Governor's Grants project, and I have known her for 16 years, almost 17 years, and when she told me she was interested in this position, I was so hopeful that she would get it, and she did. They're having a 40th anniversary reception tomorrow afternoon. I have a retirement reception I'm hosting, but I'm hoping to get over there, because I haven't seen her, and I want to give her a big hug and welcome her to Manhattan, but here's my point in saying this. Kathy Ray has some great ideas about publicizing their services more proactively than what was done in the past, and that's not a criticism, that's just how she prefers to educate the community about what they do. And in my last job, I was an open partner with our victim advocacy group, and I want our department to do the same with her, and I think we can be a lot more effective in educating the community about things like this. And I, and I know from previous conversations with her that she fully supports "Your Option, Your Control."
I just want to say thanks for all the work you've done. You know, when you're in the position of serving as mayor, people send you emails about stuff that's outside your purview, that's police business, and I've always forwarded those to you, and I just want to thank the way you've handled those and the officers that went out and met with the citizens and all those things that got taken care of. Outstanding work.
Well, thank you. The staff is a great staff. I'll tell you something, I've told Mr. Freer a couple of times, even though we're not part of city or county government, I approach these things as though we were. I think the community and the staff deserve that kind of quick response. You know, there's only one police department here in Riley County, aside from K-State, which is more of a specialty department, so there's no options for them other than us, and so I don't want them to wish they had other options. So we do our very best. We did send out on this latest email, a sergeant that same day that I replied and went out there, and they had a great discussion, and I think he's going to be very helpful to us in the future.
Outstanding, outstanding work. I appreciate everything the department does, and, you know, it sure does help, you know, the reputation of the city on economic development and everything, because for sure, we got a safe city, we got great police, we got good fire, and that's the starting point, so.
Thank you very much.
So thank you for everything your department does.
You're welcome. Thank you. You'll have a good evening.
Okay. Sounds like we've gotten to the end of the agenda, so we can adjourn the meeting. Thank you for taking part tonight.